Don't forget your phones. Normally if I remember, I lay it up here. Okay. Ready?
Yeah.
The meeting will come to order. For public information, a copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the meeting room, back here on the east wall, if anyone needs to read that. We'll have roll call.
Harris?
Here.
Knapper?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Reisig?
Here.
Blue?
Here.
Okay. Have you stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let me make a couple announcements. I want to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded to be broadcast at a later date. So, a couple things, we want you to remember that whoever wants to speak, be sure and be recognized, then come forward. When you are recognized, state your name for the record and spell it so that the county clerk will have the correct information when she types up her minutes. Remember, there's no swearing or any other inappropriate language. We all need to check our cellphones, try and turn them off or to silent. Want to remind the commissioners that we need to speak clearly and loudly into the microphones for the recording purposes. We'll see how long the meeting goes, but we may take an eight-minute recess somewhere midway through the meeting, we'll see how that goes and how long it's going to take. We do want to recognize Mr. Jason Ocean tonight. It's his first time being here by himself. He was here at our last meeting, but he'll be our new attorney for civil affairs that's sitting here. Phil Kelly retired, and we appreciate him being here, and so I hope that you all get to meet him during the process. So, I think the next item on the list is approval of the agenda, and consider any modifications if we need to.
I'll second it.
So, I have a motion to approve the agenda as submitted, and we have a second, so let's go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
Okay, so the motion's carried. Also, we want to remind everyone that the board reserves the right to enter into a closed session if deemed necessary. I don't believe we have one at the end of the meeting tonight, but we always want to reserve the right in case something comes up during the meeting to be able to go into executive session if needed. All right, so the first items this evening is reorganization of the, our commissioners, and we have, we had two commissioners that were re-elected this past November, and they were sworn in recently last week, and so we have technically the same people, but some that were re-elected. And so, every January, we reorganize and decide who's going to be in what positions. We did have a work session on this item about three weeks ago or so, and so many of these items were discussed approximately three weeks ago, so you should be aware of that. So, under the reorganization item, the first one is to appoint a chairperson.
I would move that we appoint Mark Harris. I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to appoint myself as chairman. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
All right, motion's carried. Thank you for that support. Then we also, the next item is to appoint vice chairman of the board.
I move that we appoint Charlie Knapper as vice chairman.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to appoint Charlie Knapper as vice chairman. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
All right, motion's carried. We'll go on to the next item. The next item is to appoint officials to various offices. For, at least the people up here who have the list, this is the actual appointing the person into what we call appointed positions, and I'll read through them quickly so that for the recording purposes. As was talked about at the last workshop, facilities manager is Jay Steinle, county safety committee chairman is Jay Steinle, central communications director, Selinda Howard, veteran service officer, Matthew Myers, director of public works and highway superintendent, Steve Baird, building and zoning director, William Mayban, weed control authority superintendent, Steve Baird, general assistance coordinator, Lisa Rhine, personnel director, civil rights director, Lisa Rhine, management accountant, Lisa Rhine, detention center director, Sheriff Overman, information systems director is Bytes, tourism director, Brenda Lysy, transit manager, Kirk Richter, region 22 emergency management is Rob Crowder. Those were the names that we talked about three weeks ago in our work session, and do we have any discussion or a motion to that effect?
Do you want to include the liaisons on that?
No, it's a separate item.
Oh, it is, okay.
Down here, yeah.
I move that we approve the aforementioned individuals to their positions.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to appoint those individuals to the positions that I mentioned. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
All right, the motion's carried. The next item is to appoint representatives to serve on various boards and committees, and that's representatives primarily of commissioners, that's the front page of this. I don't know how many there are here, about 25, almost 30 different committees that the commissioners are appointed to, to attend their meetings and/or be a appointed person to sit on their boards or whatever else, whatever function they have us do. Some are voting positions, some are not. I don't know whether I should read through this or not. Is there copies of this out there somewhat?
I gave some to Megan.
Okay.
Is there anybody else from the press that I don't recognize? I made extra copies because I don't think it was in your packet.
Okay.
But I can upload it again, and it'll be on the website.
So, if anybody wants to know, but it's, I don't plan to go through this long list unless I need to.
I'm not sure.
Okay. Again, we did go through this line by line.
Do you want me to put it up on the screen?
I don't, I don't think it's that critical, Kelly. We did go through these appointments line by line back about three weeks ago at our work session.
They're virtually the same as they were last year.
Yeah, there was very little change. There was a little, but very little.
And again, I sent a text to everybody indicating that I'm willing to take on another one because I passed.
Have I got one for you?
You've got one for, well.
The one you gave me doesn't fit me very well.
Oh.
Did you go to a meeting?
I did.
Well, now you know.
I know.
Well, if we need to rethink that at some point, we can.
Maybe we ought to discuss that in all seriousness, because they do need a representative there.
Well, I'll continue to go, but it's not really a good fit for what I do.
Okay.
And I would say I would take that from you, but I just gave, I just.
I know, you just gave it to me.
I'm not, I'm not able to do it. Not able to do it at all.
Well, are we okay with leaving it that way for right now?
Yes, oh absolutely.
And then if it comes to a point where you can't do it, then we'll need to, Ken can't do it.
I'm giving, I'm giving him six bucks.
I have a conflict of interest, and so then it would end up back in Charlie and Mike's, and Charlie has a little bit of a history there too, and so.
I'm a recent employee.
You're right.
Too soon to sit on that board.
So, yeah, we have some.
So, you better get real close to Mike.
I gave Mike one, I.
And this is the community action board, I think it's no secret what it is, so.
It's a, it's a responsibility, it really is.
It is. Jeff Metz, I've talked to him that night, and he's been on that board fourteen years.
Yeah.
But he doesn't have a life either.
But he must not.
That's Jeff's other problem, he has nothing else.
I can see where that's due.
Has nothing else to do with his time, like go to board meetings, yeah.
Okay, any other discussion before we have a motion here? Entertain a motion?
Hang on.
Okay.
The tourism board is here? Do you want to address anything?
Well, I, Brenda made it to here this morning, she wasn't supposed to be back. But Lana Hubbard, I am on the advisory board.
Lana, you got to come up.
For tourism, excuse me, sorry guys. I am on the advisory board for the tourism committee, and I think I have, there's a few others here tonight. I'm basically here for the bylaw change, or down, down the agenda line. But, you know, Charlie and I have been in conversation, and I think Charlie's maybe been in conversation with a few others. Right now, our board, the advisory board, we're all volunteers, there's just a little bit of tension, and so I guess I'm addressing it as, I don't know if you guys have ever considered changing boards, just to see what each, each committee does. It's just a thought, apparently Russ doesn't like where he's at right now, so, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. But anyways, I didn't know if this would be an option to look at. I think it's probably good to learn maybe what some other things are doing out there, what some other boards are doing out there. I don't know if someone else, Chuck, you know, has something else to say, but that's my opinion. I'd kind of like to see that. We've been at a struggle here for, I don't know, a while now, and I feel like we're losing ground as far as what I always thought my position as an advisory member was. So, that's my opinion, I don't know if someone else has a different opinion. But, that's where I stand, I just didn't know if that'd be an option, to look at maybe liaisons changing, or, you know, staying on, but maybe they move to the alternate position and transfer down. That's where I stand, I just wanted to share that. I don't know how the inner workings are, but I, you know, if any of them have something else to say, but that's where, it's kind of where I'm standing on it, so.
I would only mention that we did get letters from some of you, we've got some letters from the committee, not knowing exactly who they were, because we didn't have names at the bottom, but we had some from other personal individuals giving their thoughts, similar to what you're describing. And so, and obviously, we got those letters probably within the last four or five days, and when this was originally discussed, we didn't have that information. Certainly, though, the, I know that I've had at least four or five phone calls from different people on this subject, kind of on both sides, and so I'm aware of what you're talking about. And the, I think one of the things that someone reminded to me was that if we need to, whatever we decide here tonight, and we just discussed it about Russ's committee assignment, these can, can be changed by simply putting it on the agenda and changing it at a future point. One of the things I noticed in one of the letters I received was, talked about the strategic plan, and I think it went back to was it 21 or something like that, and that we probably need to readdress that. And I know that for several years, there's been some tension, so to speak. Sometimes it's been better, sometimes not. I know that we have some difference of opinion with the, with the thought of how much money do we spend for athletic events versus, what do we call the other one, luxury or?
Leisure.
Leisure, yeah, not luxury, leisure, tourism. And so, I think at some point in time, we're going to, I think the committee is going to need to tell us what they feel. I know a little bit about Charlie, but when we look at annual budget, how much of that should go maybe to each direction, and then there may be more than just the two, there's probably three or four or five, but maybe all of that's going to be discussed when we, when you guys work on a strategic plan again. One of the things that came to my attention when this came up was that this money obviously comes from, I say it comes from the hotels and motels, but it really comes from the visitors that are staying here, right? And, but that money then gets given at the local motels and hotels, and then ultimately that money comes into an account that, that we direct or can vote on where the money goes based upon what the committee has recommended over the years. And it would be an interest of mine to know a little more from those people that are, have either an ownership or some kind of vested interest in those motels and hotels as to what their opinions are as far as percentages of what categories do they think are the most important. Would be of interest to me as we go forward, and how we gather that information, I'm not sure, other than simply going back to ask them. But, this whole subject has been difficult, and it kind of comes to a head a little bit tonight because of this position, and so I understand that. But if anybody else wants to speak here, or anyone in the audience?
Well, I'll just, I would like to qualify myself for the position. I've been the commissioner liaison to the tourism committee since I was elected, and elected in 2018, took office in 2019. I'll tell you, when I went door to door, talking to voters, I talked to them about my passion for tourism, and I told them about my history in the tourism industry. I studied hospitality at the University of South Carolina, Beaufort. I lived in Hilton Head, South Carolina, which was a destination tourism, it was a tourism destination. People went there for the beach, they went there for the golf, they went there for the tennis. A town of 50,000 people with 2 million visitors annually. So naturally, the University of South Carolina, Beaufort, which was just on the mainland, Hilton Head Island, and then the mainland is the town there, the county of Beaufort, South Carolina, the university there had a very, very robust hospitality program. I, I lived there for eight years, worked for the beach patrol, okay? So what happens is when somebody comes to Hilton Head, they walk out to the beach, and the first thing they do is they ask the lifeguard, what is there to do here besides go to the beach, or besides play golf? And so, what, what, what the university put together with the Chamber of Commerce of Hilton Head was what they called an ambassador program. It was a, you know, if I had my degree at the time, I would receive continuing education credits for, for becoming an ambassador for Hilton Head Island. And, so, you know, the beach season was basically May through October, and that's when the majority of those 2 million visitors would come. And then the, the town had a very important shoulder season, you know, outside of the months of April to October, the town was very focused on creating events to bring more tourists to the area. So I, I had a seven-year crash course in destination tourism and also event creation tourism. While I was there, I grew up here, I've always, as long as KNDB.com has been around, and as long as StarHerald.com has been around, I've paid attention to what was going on here with the tourism industry, and I thought it needed a shot in the arm. So that, these were the things I would talk about with voters when I, when I stand on their doorsteps, and I have a, have a belief that Scotts Bluff County is a void on the map when we talk about sports tourism. You draw a circle around Scotts Bluff County, and you go from Spearfish and Deadwood and Rapid City and Gillette and Casper and Douglas, Cheyenne, Loveland, Sidney, North Platte. All of those towns have sports teams that are traveling to all of those other towns, you know? Spearfish visits Cheyenne, Casper visits North Platte. This, all the, the sports tourism industry is very reciprocal, and so when, when, when Casper travels to North Platte, North Platte goes to Casper. And when Loveland goes to Spearfish, Spearfish goes to Loveland. And all, and we have tons of club sports teams here in Scotts Bluff County that are traveling to all these other locations, but we're not holding very many tournaments here on the scale of what the 23 Club is currently doing. So I've been talking about this for six years now. The, change, change is difficult, and I understand that I have been pushing the tourism committee to move faster. And one of the things they did while I was pushing them was they commissioned a, a study by a consulting group called Huddle Up Group, and they, they, they did a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats, to tell us how we could capitalize on sports tourism in, in our twin cities. And, yes, there are weaknesses, and yes, there are threats, but with those threats and weaknesses are strengths and opportunities that exist in spite of the threats, that exist in spite of the weaknesses. So, I really want to stay as the liaison to this committee, and as the commissioner assigned to communicate with, with Brenda, our, our tourism director. I would really like to stay in this position to continue to move this thing forward. I've been trying to drive this thing down the interstate at 89 miles an hour, 79 miles an hour, but, you know, if I need to take the foot off the accelerator and go 55, maybe we can do that. I want to see this thing through to the end, I want to see sports tourism thrive in our community. We've done the back of the napkin math, that 23 Club tournament brings in somewhere between 300 and 400,000 dollars for a weekend. If we can do 10 or 12, eight to 10 more tournaments of that caliber, this, that, that changes our community drastically. That's what I want to see done. I'm the commissioner with the tourism experience, and I, I believe I'm the best fit for this tourism board. Like I said, change is hard. I don't want to see murals, I don't want to see art in the park, I don't want to see 30,000 dollars spent on sculptures. I want to see that money go to sports, umpires, referees, the, the, the Huddle Up, the Huddle Up book, I'll, I'll finish this up, but the Huddle Up book says one of the first things we should do is hire an event coordinator, an event creator, and I would like to see that, 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 the money that's been spent on those sorts of things, I would, I think it should go towards this event creator so that we can create more events in our area. Brenda's plate is full, Brenda's plate, Brenda does a tremendous job with our leisure market. We need to hire a second person to do the sports market. This is, this is paid for through lodging tax. The county cannot lower the property tax levy, we cannot buy down the property tax levy with lodging tax. The cities can, the cities can throw that money into their general fund if they, if they desire to, but the county can only spend tour, lodging tax on promoting the county and improving the, the tourism facilities in the county. So, this is like, this is like playing with house money, okay? This isn't property tax, this is tax, these are taxes paid by people who come to visit our community, and this is like sitting in the batting cages. We might strike out, we might strike, we might strike out six times in a row, but there's going to be another, there's another pitch coming down the alley, and we can hit a home run with sports tourism. I'm going to leave it at that.
I'd like to speak.
We have one other fellow behind you that, that maybe we should.
Ladies first.
All right, go ahead.
So, I've only been on the tourism board about one year now, my name's Desiree Rice, I was on the tourism board and I work at the Monument Inn. I was just getting comfortable about how the tourism group works and everything, it was under my impression that people come before us with these events that they have, you know, put their time into creating, and they want help funding them to bringing outside revenue into the area. I never knew that it was our responsibility to create any type of events to bring more revenue in, especially sporting events. I believe that that would have to be like a different branch or sector maybe we need to create when it comes to creating events. I was unaware that that was part of our responsibility as a board. You know, this has just came new to me, I, I actually have been on the board for about a year, and I never seen Charlie at a single meeting until. Have been on the board for about a year and I never seen Charlie at a single meeting until this thing with the Cattlemen's Ball came up. Where um, it came for you guys that we um allowed thirteen thousand dollars for the bus rides back and forth transporting. Groups um to and from their event, uh, was brought out in the country and you know, drinking happens and everything. We thought it was necessary for them to have um, not be driving back and forth between the ball and their hotels, so we voted it in. Um, I know that it was uh brought before you guys and I, no, Charlie was upset because we agreed that the thirteen thousand dollars, which does seem kind of steep. But when you think about it, I mean, that was making our streets and our town safer and I, I think it was absolutely necessary, you know? Um, I know that I overheard that anything over ten thousand dollars was supposed to be brought before the commissioners. But then I was also told that that was not where, they couldn't find that anywhere in the bylaws. Um, I was under the impression that I was on a board and my vote counted. And that we got to um vote things in and that there was a process that had to be taken into place where people apply for these funds. And then they come and present their um, you know, whatever in front of us, e- e- explaining to us why they're needing these funds. To help their event um proceed and everything and then we vote yes or no whether or not we would allow um tourism funding to help. Them put their event on. Um, I know that there was one instance where that process was completely jumped over. And that's when Charlie jumped over, if we didn't have a chance to vote, it just got brought straight before the commissioners, which kinda made me feel like. You know, like, well, what am I even doing here? Like, why does everybody else have to follow through with this process? If um, you know, you, you hold a place on the board, other people have applied for their money as well as that was on the board. And it still had to come before us, we still had to vote yes or no. I don't know why in this instance that got overlooked and it just got straight brought to you guys about the sports commissioner, which. Is on a whole nother subject that I'd like to bring up as well. I do think a sports commissioner is a good idea. However, it did say in the Huddle Up that we do not have the facilities to um, for these types of events. Uh, to be brought in in such a mass amount like that, that um, you know, we need to have better facilities that can accommodate this. As well as hotel rooms, because I know during the tournament season, it's a, you know, we get sold out, we don't even have any rooms left over and people are calling. We have waiting lists that we can't accommodate or that never even get addressed because nobody ever cancels. Um, I think that it's kinda put in the cart before the horse when we try to put in a sports commissioner, when they don't even have an office. You know, to work out of, we don't know how they're gonna get paid, we don't have any of those types of kinks worked out yet. I agree that it's a good idea, but however, I, I think that there's a, a longer process, we can't just put this into. Play without completely thinking it out, as well as have the facilities to co- accommodate that. Um, I myself, ever since that Cattlemen's Ball, like I just kinda, you know, so many things have been changed. All of a sudden Charlie showing up to these meetings, the meeting place changed, they're trying to change the meeting times, which I'm uncomfortable with because I'm just like, well. I didn't, yeah, I was unaware that he was even a part of the board, I thought a liaison was somebody who just kind of overshadowed us and you know, would give us a. At a boy or whatever, um, you know, on, on our decisions that we were making, instead of feeling like we're being ridiculed and um dissected and. Um, you know, shame on us for voting this in, which is kind of like, you know, slapped in the face because why am I even on a board if my vote doesn't matter? And, and that's where I stand with it, I, I feel like, you know, I applied for this board, they, they allowed me to be a part of the board, which I'm thankful of. I'm passionate about tourism, I know Charlie's passionate about tourism. But when we ta- try to divide sports lia- liaison or whatever, um, all these different sectors of, of the tourism funds. I think that maybe we should have a, a separate board that creates events or creates sporting events. Um, and that way, they're not butting heads because I can't say that either one is more important than the other. I hate to see, you know, the Scotts Bluff National Monument, yeah, it's been around and it's gonna be around forever, but we still have to create. Um, enthusiasm and interest for people to be brought in to go see these places or else, you know, what's gonna co- what's gonna stop them from. You know, losing their funding and, and everything else, I mean, pretty soon it's just gonna be a trail, there's not even gonna be a, you know, a visitor center or anything like that. Because there's not gonna be any funding for it. So I think that are all just as important as um sporting.
Appreciate your comments. Um, yeah, thanks. So um, let me just mention some, but you can come on up, sir, on your way up. I just wanna remind everyone that at this point in time, the item on the agenda is the. Which commissioner um is getting ready to be appointed to being the um. Yeah, no, it's not, you're not there yet.
The front of, the big, long page.
Yeah, which is the tourism committee appointment. And who is going to be appointed to the tourism committee? That's the issue at hand right now. And as Lana said, we have another issue with the bylaw change coming up more towards the end. Um, I know part of this discussion relates to this item that we're discussing. But um, let's be sure we understand that our primary issue right now is. Um, which commissioner is going to be um, number one, the primary person for the tourism committee? And then we always have an alternate. And again, we should say that Charlie is on for the primary person. And I believe Ken is on for the alternate, so just remind you that. Go ahead, your name and.
My name is Chuck Heeman. Um, the owner of the Western Nebraska Pioneers. H E E M A N.
Thank you.
Yeah, and really, I just, uh, real, I know, I won't take up much time, but you know, I've been on, I've been on this uh, the tourism committee, I think two and a half years. Um, I got on the committee, I think Charlie was at the first meeting I came to and then we didn't see him for a year and a half. Until this Cattlemen's Ball thing happened, then apparently somebody, you know, suggested that he comes to the meetings. And in, in my, in my view, the thing's been basically chaos ever since. Um, that we, we're changing meeting times, we're changing meeting locations. Um, we're, we're getting bogged down in our meetings, talking about this sports position, and I have thoughts about it. Um, that'll, that'll wait for another day. But um, you know, and then we're, we're being suggested that we don't take any grant um requests under ten thousand dollars. Cause everything has to be a big swing. Um, and then we're, now we're talking about doing quarterly meetings, now we're talking about doing every month meetings. I don't know when our next meeting is right now, I don't even know, and I'm on a committee. Because every meeting we come to now, it turns into that, well, we should maybe do this and we should maybe do that. And you know, it, it's, it's, it's hard to make decisions when, when, you know, you're, you're sitting there and. You know, clearly there's some sort of tension between Charlie and Brenda and that's not my concern, I'm not a drama guy, but clearly there's something there that needs to get resolved. So that we can con- continue to at least try to, the last four or five meetings, we've really gotten nothing done, but talk about the same stuff. So I think um, whether that's a changing liaison, and, and Charlie, I have no doubt about your qualifications, I really don't. And please don't take this as, as an attack, it's, it's that I'm on this committee, I run a business in town. I don't have three hours to sit here and go back and forth on, on minutia, let's, let's stuff, let's, let's get going. And I know the rest of us feel the same way, you know, we've got, we've got lives to lead. So whether that's a changing liaison, it's, it, that's not my decision, I know, I know I would, I would support that. But I don't know what the ac- answer is on that. Um, but I know if, if the committee keeps doing what it's doing, it's really, for most of it, it's, it's, it's a waste of our time.
Thank you.
So I'll, I'll just throw out there that uh, one of the suggestions I've had for the tourism committee is to keep the meeting to an hour. And to stay on the topics that are on the agenda. I don't run the meeting, the president of the committee runs the meeting. Um, and Brenda and I have had several conversations about the conciseness. And, and the, the, and sticking to the business at hand. Those, those items, um. You know, and then we can talk about the dates, um, you can find those in the minutes. Um, we're at the meet, the meetings I have been to, I believe they were reported in the press recently. Um, so um. Those are, those are the, those are things that I've been working towards, just like sticking to a, an hour-long business meeting. And also staying on the, on the, on topic a- uh, according to the agenda.
Hello, um, Melissa Price, that's M E L A S S A P R I C E.
Thank you.
Hello, I didn't think I'd be back here so soon, right? I just got appointed, um. Just briefly, because I don't wanna beat a dead horse or the cattle from the Cattlemen's Ball or whatever, also because I'm a new appointee. I, I've only been to one meeting, but I um, just had a few thoughts, um, first of all, I know you received a letter. Um, that letter did not speak on my behalf. So um, I don't think that um, it's necessary at this time to consider a change. I'm actually kind of right headed the direction where you are, Mark. Um, in terms of, I just recently, because I'm new, I've been reviewing the financials, I asked to see strategic plan. All of the information um, since I was newly appointed. And I think that the time, you know, the committee is obviously at a crossroads. And I think that the thing that we probably need is to just try to figure out, how can we maybe, whether that's refreshing our strategic plan process. Or whatever that looks like, to find some common ground and put together a plan, I think both of these things can coexist. And I think that it might be, you know, if, if six months down the road, you know. You, we maybe still feel like we're in the same place we are now, then maybe that's something that you talk about. But I think at this point in time, um, I don't think it's necessary to um, make a change right now. I know that, that coming to sometimes these large changes can be difficult. But I think um, we may look back on this in a year or two and be glad that we, you know, had these growing pains. And, and had, have gone down some of the directions that were, that were currently going. And I've talked to you guys a lot about sports, I'm not gonna talk to you about sports a lot. I just think, um, I also agree with you that a local discovery process throughout our community to find out what our community. Is looking for or how they think that we should reinvest the funds, um, might really help to, you know, guide our work. And, and I think we can, I think we can do this within the structures that we currently have. So, thank you.
Any others? Alright, seeing none, um, it adds for many comments from commissioners and or emotion.
Well, I think that at some, some point, we're gonna have to figure out either this thing is gonna be one unit or it's gonna have to kinda veer off two different ways. With one checkbook. But at the same time, uh, there's room to do both of these projects. Or at least to have a hard look at them, and so I, I'd like to see them looked at a little harder.
I think um, ultimately, the, the issue of the new strategic plan. Um, we all, um, those of you that are on the committee. And Charlie probably are real familiar with the bylaws and how that, all that voting process works. And then again, from the committee, um, some of those decisions can get made by the committee. But if they get over, I believe it's ten thousand, that, those votes have to come here. And ultimately, then your information is recommendations. And we have the final authority to say yes or no on certain expenditures. So um, but I think we all need to be real, as familiar as we can be with how that process works. And um, will be better um, making decisions if we know more and more about those bylaws. And we're gonna talk a little bit about that tonight, but um. Anyway, um, I would just throw that out there, there's no doubt that um. The, the process um, and the relationship between the board. And the committee has not been the greatest for several years. Um, but I, you know, from way back in the beginning, I will say that um. Uh, tourism in and of itself i- is not something that I have a, the passion for like many of you do. Um, but um, when I first heard of Charlie's credentials. And of Charlie's passion for tourism. Um, I felt that um, his credentials alone um, far outweighed. Anything that I knew about tourism. And he seemed to be a good logical choice based upon credentials. Um, to um, be the, the primary um, person um, for tourism. Uh, primary commissioner. And so that has been my opinion for whatever it's been, six years or whatever. And um, um, so I still feel that we, he still has more credentials. I realize that we've gotta work together. And we've gotta work towards trying to um, make, make things go. Um, and I realize too, that again, it's important to have a community committee. To provide input and direction for tourism. And that's what the committee's there for, and I think part of that's by state statute, and so.
Could I just say one more thing?
If you come up here.
Um, on, on the advisory board, like I said, as far as myself, I'm not gonna speak for anyone else. Um, I've learned a lot just from being on that board and what it, what it brings to the community. I love when someone comes in and they have a grant for two thousand dollars because they're, I've said this a thousand times. Putting on a paint show or something, I don't know, I'm just saying, but we are getting to a point to where we're getting divided into. Who, who's eligible and who's not. But back to this part, from what I understand, and I asked Charlie this last night when he called me. Do you have to have an advisory board to collect lodging tax? You do. You ha- the, the Board of Commissioners have to have an advisory board to collect that.
Yes.
There have been counties that have lost that. We don't want that. I, I don't want that.
You mean because?
I, I don't want that, but I mean, we're, and I know, like I said, everyone, we're, we're all here at different levels, I think. On as far as Melissa just came on, a year and a, two years, maybe four years, I, I, I'm not sure. I just know in my four and a half, four or five, this has just been building. This been building, it was good the first couple of years and we're just not making progress there. But I just wanted to clarify from you guys, because sometimes I am told you guys have already approved it. I don't think that's true.
We have never approved anything that hasn't come through the committee, never.
No, that's not my point.
Okay.
That you're going to, I should, I, I'm gonna rephrase that, that you're going to approve it, whether we, our advice or not. I'm just stating, I just wanna be wise here as we move forward. Like I said, I think he's got great vision, Charlie, uh, Commissioner, uh, Knapper's got great vision. He, I, I agree, I wanna see us sports, I love sports. But I just think there's brick by brick to get there. And maybe that's too slow, I don't know. But I would love to see a steering committee and maybe that's the le- liaison. I don't know if this person is under the tourism director, bringing this stuff to her, I know other counties work that way. They have events, they have sports, they come say, hey, I can se- schedule this. I don't know, maybe that's an avenue we, we go. But um, I don't like to see, I, I, I don't like confrontation, I, I don't. I mean, I, I'm not gonna back down if you're gonna try to walk on me. But I do think this is a great thing, I love Scotts Bluff County, I love our community and I think you guys all do too. So I think just to get, you know, and it might just be more of a, like I said, I suggested that earlier, maybe a flip-flop. Maybe there's someone that's the primary one and an alternate. But I just, I just, I don't know, I just feel as, and you know, as the president. And yes, sometimes meetings do go longer, I've set um, in many of meetings that they get off schedule.
Are you the president?
I am, so the last meeting, I did let go too long, okay? I wish I wouldn't have, cause we talked a whole lot of sports and I was not planning that, so, anyways.
Charlie and I had a long talk. A father, son, grandfather, grandkid, cause I'm old enough to be both, actually. There's certain ways of getting things done. You have a brilliant idea and you're, you're passionate about that idea. And, and good or bad, doesn't matter, this, th- this one I think is a good idea. And and good or bad, doesn't matter, this thi- this one I think is a good idea. I I I have no problem with with doing it at all. Charlie mentioned about maybe dropping down to seventy-nine miles an hour. I would suggest maybe fifty-five to slow it down a bit. There was a suggestion made that they smaller subcommittee be put together. Look at all the whatever needs to happen, and and that could be, that could be done in a very short amount of time. We also discussed how you reach that that particular thing. There's there's suggestions, there's ways that you can do that that is palatable to everybody involved. You know, you can lower your head and 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 drive it in, or you can sit back and say, here's here's an idea I have, folks. What do you guys think? We, I I'm passionate about this, as he is about about this this sports commissioner. As I say, we had a, we had a very, very long visit about maybe the 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 way that we need to to take care of it and still get the end result. Still get the end result. It may end up that that we're gonna have a a a person sitting out here, Randy Mininger is retired and he could not just, not not really Randy. But there there may be that person that's out there that is going to push this and it's going to drive it and it's gonna do what needs to be done. On a personal basis, I'm not sure we're there yet. Charlie thinks we are. I I don't know. That's gonna be a difference of opinion. I would like to stay on as the alternate. I could, I I would like to attend all the meetings and give my two cents worth. I I I don't have near, near the experience and the expertise in tourism as Charlie does. I I sat on that committee early on, not near, quite as passionate about it as 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 Charlie is now. And and I'm I'm willing to do that. I'm willing to help. I think Charlie is willing to help. I think Charlie is willing to to see that it gets done, for one thing, but maybe in a maybe a little different way possibly, and I don't mean to speak for you, Charlie, at all. I'm I'm just, I'm just saying that there there are ways to get to what you want without making everybody upset while you're doing it. This committee has been together for decades, has done some great, great things for this community. And I think they're gonna continue to do that. I truly, I truly believe that. And and if the sports commission is gonna be one of those to do it, more power to it. Let's get it done. Let's do what needs to be done. There's ways of doing it right, there's ways of doing it wrong, and I'm not sure that we're doing everything correctly right now. But I thi- I I think we can fix it. I really think we can fix it. Uh I'm willing to help with that. That's why I'd like to stay on at least the alternate. And I'll I'll do what I can. I'll work with Charlie. I'll work with all of you to to see that that these things are done, whatever the whatever the the concern is. There's an answer to everything. There's an absolute answer to everything. And just need to take a couple steps back and see what those answers are. And uh again, so that's that's where I am with it.
Well, I I would, uh if you would be willing to uh work with Charlie to uh put a steering committee together to give this thing some direction, get some costs and some factors put together, so we know which direction it can head. I would ex- I would make a motion to accept the this as presented.
Just what you're saying, that's what came out of the last committee meeting. It, I I thought that last committee meeting went very well in the fact that we are going to put together the the experts, the coaches, the athletic directors, those folks that wanna do it. And and again, I I I know Charlie wants to hit it at about eighty miles an hour.
If you can let Charlie take the lead and you can be the throttle, I think we would be okay. I think we could, you two could make it work.
I could be the governor on it.
Then let's let's uh let's make a motion to accept this as presented.
Okay. Okay, so that's this entire list of um appointment of uh the commissioners to various boards and agencies. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote?
I need a second, please.
You need a second?
Oh, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. So now we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
Okay, motion's carried. Appreciate everyone's comments and thoughts and I trust that we can hopefully move some things forward. Um so the next item is appoint commissioner liaisons for appointed officials. And um so again, that's going back here to the back page and um yeah, this uh list is shorter. I'll read them quickly. So the facilities manager is Jay Steinle and I'm his liaison. The county safety committee chairperson is Jay Steinle. Mike Blue is the liaison. Central communications director, Selinda Howard. Ken Meyer is the liaison. Veteran service officer, Matt Myers. Um Mr. Blue is the liaison. Director of Public Works, Highway Superintendent, Steve Baird. Mr. Reisik is the liaison. Building and zoning director, William Mabon. I'm his liaison. Weed control authority superintendent, Steve Baird. Mr. Reisik is the liaison. General Assistance Coordinator, Lisa Rhine. Um Mr. Knapper is the liaison for that. Personnel Director, Civil Rights Director, Lisa Rhine. Um Ken Meyer is the liaison. Management Accountant, Lisa Rhine. Ken Meyer is the liaison. Detention Center Director is Sheriff Overman. And uh Mr. Meyer is the liaison. Information Systems Director is Bytes uh company. And uh Mr. Knapper is the liaison. Tourism Director is Brenda Lacy. And Mr. Knapper is the liaison. Um and Transit Manager, Kurt Richter. Um Mr. Reisik is the liaison. And Region Twenty-Two Emergency Management uh is Rob Crowder. And Mr. Blue is the liaison. And I say that we are the liaison. Many of us have been the liaison for those positions. Um but certainly, I'm not suggesting that those have been decided. But that's the the agenda item now is to decide the people for those.
I'll make a motion to accept the uh appointed official liaisons as uh present.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
All right, so um the motion's carried. We'll go ahead and go to the next item, which is consider designation of twenty-twenty-five official county newspaper. Is there any staff person that talks about this typically?
No, we make the decision.
Okay.
Most of the time, when there were multiple papers, the individuals would be here and pitch their paper.
Okay.
We have no option.
We don't have a whole lot of options.
We have one.
Well, we did, we used to have.
You have another?
No, we we explored using the Business Farmer last year.
Yeah.
Um they don't have the circulation, so uh we are I will make a motion for the Star Herald to be the newspaper of record.
Second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
All right, so the motion's carried. Uh the next item is consider designation of Scottsbluff County website as an additional method of providing notice of meetings.
Make note of the new website.
And so my understanding of that is we still have to advertise it in the paper. But this is an additional way to advertise.
In the hopes that someday our website is good enough.
Right.
No, that the legislature removes the need for a newspaper of record.
But for right now, it's simply an additional method.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to designate Scottsbluff County website as the additional method of providing notice of meetings.
Okay.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
Mark, that's ten bucks you owe us now.
Yeah.
You have five yeses.
The uh, all right, motion's carried. Okay, the next item is consider designation of newspaper for twenty-twenty-five delinquent tax list publication.
I will make a motion that this Scottsbluff Star Herald is our designated paper for twenty-twenty-five delinquent tax list publications.
Our website won't qualify for that. Can that, can that not be included?
Well, we can also.
Heather just said no.
No.
We can put it on the website. I mean, and we always usually put a link to it, but it has to be published in the newspapers.
Yeah, there's just stuff we have to do by law.
Okay. So we had a motion. Did we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
Motion's carried. Okay, we got through that list. That must have been like your last meeting, Alan, was long.
We can pay the bills now?
Yeah, we're barely getting to the regular stuff. Okay, the next item is our consent agenda. These items are uh intended uh to be uh looked at as one item unless a commissioner wants to pull one out separately. I'd ask if there's any discussion on the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as submitted. We'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
All right, motion's carried. Uh the next item is Board of Equalization. Uh we need a motion to go into the Board of Equalization.
I move that we go into the Board of Equalization.
I'll second.
Okay. Um hearing no other discussion, let's go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
Motion's carried. So um the first item is discuss and consider approval of twenty-five motor vehicle exemptions for Panhandle Developmental Disability Services, Inc. of Scottsbluff. Ms. Heather?
All right, so these vehicles for Panhandle Developmental Disability Services, Inc. um are used for transportation of individuals with developmental disabilities from home to day services, work, doctor's appointments, entertainment, shopping, and recreation. They're a total tax loss of four thousand five hundred and eighty-seven dollars. And um this is their list for the year. So I won't be back up here with them unless they get a new vehicle or something changes. So this is their list for the whole year. And they do have a couple vehicles that are old enough that they don't have motor vehicle tax also, so.
And this twenty-five is pretty much the same as it's been?
Yeah.
So where where is Panhandle disability, development disabilities? I mean, we've got.
You know, down on uh seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, yeah.
Right next to the city hall.
Say that again?
It's right next to city.
Oh, they have one building there, but the one I'm thinking about is the one over there close to Coke.
Coke, okay.
Just across to the west of Coca-Cola.
Is that part of theirs?
I think that's part of theirs.
I didn't think it was, but that's.
I think it is, cuz they have several vehicles that sit there.
Did you tell us the tax loss?
I did. It's four thousand five hundred and eighty-seven dollars. And as far as where they're at, they just listed a P O box, so I don't have that, so I'll go with what. I'll go, I was gonna say, I'll go with what Ken says.
They're all over. Most of them are residential, residential places.
I'll move to approve the twenty-five motor vehicle exemptions for Panhandle Developmental Disabilities Services, Inc. Scottsbluff.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, let's go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
All right, motion's carried. Uh next item is receive tax list corrections. Um we have a written list of those.
I'll second.
We have a motion for approval to receive these, and we have a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
All right, motion's carried. Um we need a motion to go out of Board of Equalization.
I'll make a motion to move out of the Board of Equalization.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second to go out of Board of Equalization. Um let's go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
Motion's carried. Well, the next item, which is road and bridge. To discuss and consider surplus equipment resolution. Steve?
It's been three years since our last surplus auction we've done, so we went through our yard and we need to get rid of some more things. So uh by state statute, we have to do a resolution stating the items that we declare surplus, and then we either sell them on auction or depending on the value, sell them individually to people. So in your packets is the resolution. Um the equipment list varies from two two thousand and five pickups that have bad, bad motors to uh old bridge timbers, um small tires that don't even fit, equipment we have anymore that's just been in the shop out there. Couple old generators that don't work, so a lot of it I would just call trash. In the past, we've used uh big iron. But I'm thinking this year for the items that we need to put on auction, uh I might try that Croppies Real Estate. They have monthly auctions, website auctions.
They sell a lot of big equipment on it.
Yeah, they do. So I was thinking maybe trying those, trying them, and they're closer anyway and and see how it goes.
Not quite as expensive either.
Yeah, may not be, cuz I think they actually now have a buyer's premium where they don't charge you a a commission. So I haven't discussed it with them, but that was my thoughts was probably to give them a go. So we simply just need a motion to pass the resolution and then it requires your signatures.
I'll second it.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the resolution. Um any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
Motion's carried. All right, Steve, you have the next item. Discuss and consider awarding bids for Project C seventy-nine, three, seven, six.
So this was on our one-year street plan this year. Uh it's a bridge replacement project. Uh MC Shaft and Adam here did the design of the bridge and the and the engineering on this structure. This structure is located on County Road Nineteen, just north of County Road G. So if you remember, last year, we did a a culvert replacement on County Road G and just east of nineteen. This is just a quarter mile away from it on the same enterprise canal. So right now, the that bridge is an over twenty-foot bridge. It is on our Nebraska inventory system as an over twenty. So by replacing it with a, the culvert we're gonna replace it, it will take that off that list now.
Steve, I I I don't have a problem with with your recommendation. The concern that I have is we have such difference in the bids. Our our, what what is it that one is doing that the other one is not? I I get a little concerned when I see those kind of things.
I would say it's probably his desire if they really want the job or not. If you look at the engineers estimate.
It has to be done before the water comes in, so if, you know, if they can't get it, their bid is high.
It could be timeframe.
Right.
Uh this has an April fifteenth deadline, so you know, like with um two that are higher there, Paul Reed and uh Riker, they may have another job lined up, so they might push that to the side, so that's why they want more. They might have penalties or something with another job.
Well, my only, the old adage, you get what you pay for, kind of a deal.
Right.
You know, we've got one sitting here for two hundred and sixteen thousand and our bid is a hundred and thirteen.
Right.
And the engineers.
They were the contractor that did the project last year for a little over a hundred thousand, so I think it's probably a workload and desire to.
I'm fully, fully aware of all that too, so.
Yeah.
The bid last year was very comparable with this bid.
It's, it's pretty much the same project, really, the pipe and everything is the same as last year, so, yeah, last year they bidded at a hundred and some thousand and this year they're at two sixteen, so.
And the engineer's estimate was a hundred and forty-three.
That's correct.
So we're less than that, which is always nice.
Yes, it's at a hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars for Mark Christman Trucking. And, uh, Adam did the design on it and has worked with Mark Christman Trucking on some of our culvert projects, if you've got any questions with him. This will be the first project that, uh, I've ever been a part of with Mark Christman Trucking, so. So, uh, I know Adam's dealt with them on some other ones, so.
Russ, I'll, I'll refer to you.
They've done some work at the airport, they've done some air, uh, runway work, and if Adam's gonna be, you know, watching the project, it's all on Adam's. How it works.
What was the, something about the engineer's estimate, where is it?
A hundred and forty-three thousand, it is on the bottom of his, okay.
Now that I said it.
Make a motion to accept the project as presented.
I'll second.
Do you need to say who? Do you, did you pick Mark Christman Trucking?
Yes, the low bid as presented, I guess.
Alright, so we have a motion to accept the bid for Mark Christman Trucking for one hundred thirteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven. And we have a second, is that right?
Yes, I am the second.
Okay, alright, so we have that motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
Alright, motion's carried. Thanks for your help. Alright, the next item is, um, two fellows that have been waiting out here, but it's for receive the presentation regarding the community cleanup project and consider action. Both former mayors, one from Gearing, one from Scotts Bluff, Tony Kaufman and Randy Mininger. Go ahead, gentlemen.
Commissioners, thank you for the time to present with you tonight. Uh, what we're proposing is, uh, a multifaceted program of clean community. And so, uh, we're asking you to approve the date of April twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, from seven in the morning until, uh, five o'clock at night. Uh, we are preparing and working through a project to do a community cleanup from basically Forty-Second Street in Scotts Bluff to the Heartland Express in Gearing, uh, and then basically from Twenty-first Avenue West. Uh, with this program, we wanted to look at how do we, how do we run through this and, and learning, use it as a learning experience for incident management in case there was a disaster. We're seeing all across the United States, natural disasters happens, and is our community ready to do that? And we think that we can use the PEP project, the planning, um, and, uh, education and training. Uh, we have some grants available there to help train incident commanders, public information officers, liaison operations. So in bringing those in, uh, then we will take and work through the area churches, there's a little over fifty of them in the area that we're, uh, proposing. Uh, we're asking, Tony and I are working with the churches to, uh, bring volunteers to the table, have that all lined up, and then use the incident management system, uh, to be able to train our next generation. We've had some retirements, uh, of some individuals throughout the, the area, to be able to use incident command, use, uh, Rob Crowder's working with us on that. Uh, Scotts Bluff and Gearing have both approved the project, approved the twenty-sixth to be the free dump day. Uh, and then use our local resources, uh, it would be similar to if a tornado went through, how would we manage that? Except we're gonna clean the community as we're learning to get through that. We're asking for you to approve the, the, uh, project and the date. Um, and then we're just gonna steer it through and let the incident management and then do a whitewash afterwards so that we can uh, learn from it and see what would we have to do if it was a real disaster.
Randy, we used to do that years ago, a long time ago. And they, they utilized a lot of the, and I don't know whether they're going to again or not, city equipment or trucks or trailers or whatever, because there are those folks that have things that they, but have no way of doing it.
Correct.
Is that, that going to be available again?
Yes, yep. And we, we, we can't put too much, uh, details into it because we want the planning part of those.
Yeah.
So that we, we teach those and mentor those, uh, come alongside and, uh, get to that project or.
It went, it worked really well the last time, I mean, it was amazing, amazing, uh, the amount of stuff that people needed to get rid of and clean stuff up.
So when a, sorry, when a, when a natural disaster happens like a tornado or something, a lot of times you have volunteers, guy, people come out of their basements and they start to, you know, they rev up the chainsaw and they're, and they're working, so is there, is there gonna be an opportunity for the public to participate in this?
Yes, and that's where Tony and I, we're, we're starting with our basis of working with the area churches to bring the volunteers, um, then we'll have training sessions, use incident management, uh, to get their I D. badges, uh, to get their equipment part of the project, uh, and then also we'll be working with, uh, G I.S. We haven't let you guys know that yet, but, um, be working with G I.S. because in a natural disaster, you have to have the GPS coordinates of where you pick that pickup lumber or trees or whatever. So we're gonna work ahead of the project to get those sectors set up so that we already have that in the books in case something would happen here. But maybe to answer your question, there'll be opportunities for the business community and also private individuals that might not be affiliated with the church that wanted to participate in the program. It'd be open to all, lots of volunteers are gonna be required.
So April twenty-fifth, I should show, I should throw all my, yes, my question is, April twenty-fifth, I should throw my branches in the alley and my used couches and all that stuff.
We, we will, we will be giving out a little bit of guidance of whether it's the alley or the street or whatever, that'll be part of our planning going through this, of what's gonna make it the most efficient, uh, for that day, uh, so that we can have a clean community and, and alongside that, get our incident command and everything where it needs to be and train new ones. Uh, Tony's been working with us, keeps Scotts Bluff Gearing beautiful and with Chamber, working with T C. G on some different areas with that. And, uh, so we're pretty excited about the project, um, and, uh, it's just multifaceted, we're just, we're just, uh, kinda steering it down the road.
Randy mentioned this project to me, I don't know, sixty days ago maybe, and, um, I was just really, uh, excited about the thought of bringing faith-based churches together and them, um, being able to work together and seeing how helpful they can be, um, when we have times of crisis. And in this case, not a real crisis, but it's gonna give us a good impression of how we need to work together. And I'm just real excited about it. And that's April twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, okay.
Saturday, I'm assuming.
Yeah, it is, yep, okay. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, I've been working, I've been working with these two guys and the rest of the team on this, and it's very meticulous. I've, I've had experience in using faith-based groups, I worked at a, after Cedar Rapids flood, and what prevented the loss of life was the mayor there had the foresight to contact the local pastor ahead of the flood. And they brought in volunteers the next day for a meeting, they were assigned sectors along the waterway throughout the city and the suburban areas. And because those church people went out, is able to go to every door, in a lot of cases help them put stuff up on blocks, which still didn't help, but it was very successful and they had no loss of life, no injury. So it does work.
So we're asking for you to approve the date of the twenty-sixth of April and to, uh, bless or approve the project. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so, yeah, we simply need a motion to do that, the way I understand it, so I would move approval of, um, participation in, um, the community cleanup project, um, scheduled for April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, and fully endorse what these gentlemen are doing. We have a second. So let's go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
Motion's carried, thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Alright, next item is consider resolution to allow the treasurer to invest twenty twenty-five excess funds. Heather?
So this is a resolution that I bring you every year, um, to get the board's permission to let me, um, invest money, basically when we have it on hand. Do you want me to read the whole thing to you or?
I don't think so, explain it in your own words briefly.
It, it's just a resolution with all the state statutes that allows me to invest money. There are mu- months of the year where we have more money on hand and it just allows me to invest money and put it into CDs and that kind of stuff.
And we do this every year.
We do this every year.
Okay. Any questions from anyone or discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to allow the treasurer to invest twenty twenty-five excess funds.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Motion's carried, five, zero, okay. Um, alright.
Thank you.
Uh, we'll go to the next item on the back of the agenda, consider resolution to set twenty twenty-five delinquent rate for insufficient funds. Heather?
So this is another warrant that I, or another resolution that I bring you guys every year, um, which basically, um, says that if there's a fund that's in the negative in the county has to loan them money, we can charge, um, an interest rate. Um, the last several years, we've used one percent. We don't generally use this resolution, but we have to, um, I have to present it to you by state statute. Um, we do the resolutions that Lisa brings to you where instead we borrow money from the Keno Fund, the Capital Improvements Fund, and the Inheritance Fund instead. But this is just a warrant that we have, or a resolution that we have to have in place also.
Is this money loaned within our own facility or is this?
Yeah.
Let's just give you.
Please use your mics, you guys.
Yes.
What's that?
Microphones.
Microphones?
Mike and Russ.
Are you sure we speak into the mics?
It just gives us permission to do it if, should we need to, we've never had to do it.
Okay.
And I've been doing this for a while, so.
Loaning to ourselves.
Yes.
Alright, um.
So I think we've always set it at one percent or zero?
We've always set it at one percent. And this is, I, I did one percent also.
Okay, and is there any reason why we should go higher or, or? Or we've never used it?
We've never used it, though, I, I think one year I had it a higher just because interest rates were higher and, um, because we used to kind of, uh, I think even before I was treasurer, they, she kind of went along with what current interest rates were. And since we would be charging the money to ourselves, I think you had asked me to keep it lower, so I've always kept it lower.
And we avoid this because we do the resolutions that allow us to.
Transfer money.
Transfer money rather than borrow money.
Right. So it's, it's a very confusing one every year.
Well, it comes up every year, I still need clarification on it.
I'll make a motion for one percent.
I think last year I brought you the statute, I didn't pull up the statute again this year, but.
I'll make a motion to set the delinquent rate for insufficient funds for twenty twenty-five at one percent.
Did you second that?
I'll second.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, let me change that. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution from Heather.
Okay. And, uh, okay, so we have a motion to approve the resolution and we have a second. Alright, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
You have five yeses.
Mo- uh, the motions carried, the resolutions approved. Um, alright, Ms. Heather, consider approval of bank depositories for twenty twenty-five as First National Bank, N P A T, um, Pinnacle Bank, Platt Valley Bank, Riverstone Bank, U S. Bank, N F I T., which is Union Bank. Any comments, Ms. Heather?
No, um, this, there again, I bring this to, did you say Riverstone Bank?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I just have to get permission from you guys to be able to put money and hold money in these banks. I don't have personally any accounts for the treasurer's office at Riverstone Bank, but Kelly does, so it just kind of gives us the authority to have money in um, all of the banks in the county and to invest money with N P A T., um, and N F I T. As part of Union Bank, should, should they have better rates and we choose to go that route.
Okay, just gives you the authority to do it if you need to.
Mm-hmm.
You have the authority, then you give that authority to those other individuals who need to make.
Yeah, this is the board giving us permission to move money around as we need to, to make the better rates and that kind of stuff.
Move for approval.
I'll second that.
Alright, I have a motion and a second to approve these bank depositories for twenty twenty-five. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
Thank you. You have five yeses.
Alright, motion's carried. Okay, we're going to, um, discuss and consider approval of the Tourism Committee bylaw change. Tourism Committee Representative, Brenda. Yeah, I know, but we were getting so close.
You have a copy of it in front of you, correct?
Yes.
So, um, we've changed this one, now we're just, we have to refine it a little bit more. Um, so there's, the two green sections contain the information that needs to be changed. So overall, the only, um, change is that first of all, we, we found out that, um, the superintendent of the Scotts Bluff National Monument cannot serve anymore. So they had a change, um, federally that does not allow him to make money decisions on a committee. So we need to, um, dismiss him. And, um, instead, we would like to put an at-large member back on. And then the only other change then is instead of three lodging people, we would like to go back to two lodging people and change one to hospitality, so that could include a restaurant.
Restaurant or hotel, so we're opening up that third hotel position, um, to be a little more flexible with, with applicants. So hospitality includes hotels and restaurants is what we're thinking.
And wasn't there something about not, not being a current as far as hotel is concerned?
So we have a, we have an applicant who would fit the bill of, uh, at-large. And because the superintendent's position is being changed to an at-large person, he fits the bill. He had a past experience as a hotelier, um, not specifically a hotel, but owned an Airbnb, did some work with, online booking services and that sort of stuff. Hospitality. But he's not currently involved in hospitality, so he fits the bill for at-large.
So we would still stick with the seven members, but they would be two lodging, um, three if we found a third one or hospitality, so that takes us up to three positions, two sports, that's five, and then the one at-large is six with one attraction being representative, and that would make up the seventh position.
Brenda, what do you consider attractions?
Attractions, I consider the Scotts Bluff National Monument, which we already know that they cannot serve, a representative from the Legacy of the Plains Museum, um, Dave, though, did, just kind of got off the board. Um, it could be the Art Center, it could be the Midwest Theater, it could be Wildcat Hills. So any of the places where visitors are going to go and, and visit when they. So any of the places where visitors are going to go and, and visit when they arrive.
It could be for-profit attractions as well. Some, some folks would, would maybe argue that the, uh, would argue that the brewery is an attraction. There are, I mean, you could, you could say people come here for a lot of different reasons. And the bylaws don't stipulate that it cannot be a for-profit attraction. The bylaws allow for it to be a for-profit.
You would think that would be what you'd want is people that are connected.
Well, and that's kind of the, the, the direction I've been trying to move this thing, is that people with skin in the game have a say on the tourism board. You know, if my livelihood depends on travelers, I think that type of person is, is a, is, uh, would be a tremendous value to the tourism committee. So hotel owners, hotel managers, attraction owners, attraction operators, uh, they all fit the bill.
Would it be safe to say this is coming from the committee and with Charlie's blessing?
Say it's a compromise.
All right.
Yeah, we, we voted to bring this to you. So the committee, the recommendation comes from the Tourism Committee.
All right. May have been a compromise, but it's coming as a recommendation then?
The, uh, the discussion and the arrival at the vote could, would, could definitely be characterized as a compromise.
I'd like that.
Compromise is good.
Yeah.
I agree.
Any other discussion?
Just a point of clarification, it, with this change, would the, would the, the committee would then be made up of seven, seven members?
Yes, it's currently made up of seven. We're a few short right now, but yeah, it's, so it's just, um, different people to serve. Yes, so we would, we would go back to seven.
We've traditionally had seven spots open or available, so.
Yeah, statute says you can do five or, or seven. So instead of it being whether it's five or seven, you're.
We typically operate as a seven-member board.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Brenda, but I think one of the issues, uh, it was brought up hotel owners or managers, nobody applied for it. So, so you're having problems getting those folks to, to come, which is why you need to open it up for, for others.
It's, it's hard to get them to respond. I mean, they're all pretty busy, but um, in my personal opinion, you get better information from a manager or somebody like Desiree. Oftentimes, the managers aren't even present. So they're not talking to the people that are staying at the hotels, they're not finding out why they're there, why they're visiting, what attractions they're here for. So honestly, we've gathered some of the best information that we've ever, ever gathered. Um, I hand it to Shannon Bruner. You know, she made sure that we had that information, how many people were here for a certain event. And, but they seem, seem to have the statistics and the numbers that we would be interested in. So, I mean, I would like to keep it at at least a manager for that reason.
It doesn't specifically say who from that industry, so you can't do it as a manager?
Right, so it says, um, that the two members shall be lodging. And we would like them to be either owners or managers of the properties.
That's in there or is that?
Yes. Nope, it's, it's in here, yeah. So, but we changed it from three, um, to two and then hospitality. So then that would allow for somebody else if they would apply.
Okay. Any other discussion? Entertain a motion?
I approve that we approve, approve the changes to the Tourism Committee bylaws.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Go ahead and vote.
Thing works sometimes.
You have five yeses?
Motion's carried. Appreciate you all being here for this item and your input on it. All right, um.
I, we, can I just ask a question, quick question? Were we doing meeting times also, or was that, did we do that at the last meeting?
No, it wasn't on the agenda, so we couldn't vote.
That's right, okay.
Okay. So, let's see, we skipped right past the recess that I was hoping to take.
We are going to be much longer, aren't we?
I know, and we're not going to do a recess now. Um, we're too close to the end, so.
Okay. Yes!
But I wish we would have earlier. This is discuss and discuss and consider temporary contract services for diversion office.
We missed one.
I think we skipped one there.
Oh, sorry, Lisa, you're up. Discuss and consider Scotts Bluff County Communications Center Advisory Board Representative.
Okay, in the, I'm going to say September or October, 911 Advisory Committee meeting, Tim White resigned. And, and the alternate for him was, what's?
From the committee.
From the committee. He resigned from the committee along with Ashley Powell. And we've, haven't had a Scotts Bluff County representative since that time, and they've been really challenged with meeting quarums. We really need to get our representative on that committee. So I had, I had emailed you this week that I would, I would take the position, but I don't think I'm your best person. You need to have somebody that's serviced by the 911 comm center to be sitting on that committee. Right now, the other members, Scotts Bluff sends Tom Shingle. Gearing is now sending Nathan Flowers. And Terry Townsend, huh, I, I don't remember who everybody is, but maybe Solyndic can help. Uh, Miniter sends a man named Wayne Kilmer, maybe you know him. Anyway, it needs to be more focused with the agencies that are actually receiving or the, the, the use of the comm center. That's my opinion.
Can we table this and get, get them on board next meeting?
Uh, no.
No, no, need to.
Don't need to, but anyway, so who we recommend is someone from the Sheriff's Department.
Right.
And since Sheriff's Department is still working with the comm center, I mean, if you name me alternate, I can serve the position until they're out. Or they can take it as far as we're concerned. So Troy is interested.
Well, I highly recommend Troy.
Okay.
Do you think it's a conflict for the first, till, till you guys are officially out? Or not?
I think it might be, um, just because we're still doing the oversight, shouldn't really be voting for that kind of stuff. But if the alternate can sit in for, till we're done, which should be no more than six months, um, then we can step in, take the rabbit.
That works.
Well, that sounds okay to me.
Yeah.
Let Lisa be the alternate with the thought that as soon as you're, the sheriff's office is out of the operational part of it, that
Right.
you would be taking over that position?
Right.
Perfect.
And you, you'll, even when you're not, well, you'll remain the alternate, correct, Lisa?
Yes, I, I could.
And then, cause, cause you're going to attend the meetings consistently, whether or not you're the alternate or not.
Was I saying, don't you already? Go to them pretty much?
Yes, I do go to the meetings, yes.
And that's kind of a recent development, isn't it?
Mm, I mean, I, yes. That I've gone regularly, but I'm helping getting their budget back in line and making sure that the, that everybody is aware where the finances are so they can use that information to determine what their next projects are going to be that they'll approve, so. So I, that's, that's been my part.
Okay.
Questions?
I don't think so. So I'm assuming that, um, should this motion, uh, appoint Lisa as the interim, person, and then automatically even vote now for that to be taken over by Troy, Jason, or do we do that later?
How about rather than Troy, we say representative from the sheriff's office? Cause it may not be Troy, there may be somebody else that would do it too.
No, sir, my intent is to, to sit in on the advisory committee board. As the primary, after we're, after we're done with the oversight.
Got you, okay.
It's my opinion that the sheriff's office, if, if it should be at least a sergeant or above. So we have that experience.
So that would be, I just, would need to be specified as to what direction.
So do you think we should do it as one motion now for Lisa and then another motion later for Troy's position, or can we do it all in one motion right now?
I'd be more comfortable, maybe the other agencies would be more comfortable also if we just did one motion for Lisa now and then one motion for Troy when that, when that time comes.
Don't do anything until the, until, until it's time.
But naming her as interim?
I, to me, it's an interim instead of an alternate.
What did you say?
You could either call it interim if she's the representative until, until which time the sheriff would, Sheriff's Department, Troy, would say, I, I'm, we are now able to do that, and then we could, we could release Lisa and appoint Troy. I don't think, I don't think she's locked in forever.
No. That works, and we can bring it back and you can.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would make the motion that we appoint Lisa as the, uh, advisory board member.
Interim.
I'll second.
Okay. So we have Lisa.
Without the word interim or with it?
No, she is, she is the representative.
Okay.
And when, when the position opens, that Troy could step in, then we would
We'll make another motion at that time.
Make another motion to replace you with that.
All right. That might keep it cleaner.
Yeah.
Okay. So the motion is for Lisa to be the representative for the 911 board for now.
And disregard all the information about Troy pre, pre, previous?
For right now.
Thank you.
All right. So we have a motion and a second, the way I understood it. Right? And any other discussion? If not, we'll vote.
You have five yeses.
Motion's carried. Lisa is, is the new advisory committee representative.
Congratulations, Lisa.
Yes, Ms. Lisa. All right, next item, discuss and consider temporary contract services for diversion office.
So on December 30th, my assistant had a partial knee replacement. She thought she was going to be out two weeks. Her doctor said March 30th, she's still disagreed with that, and I'm going on three weeks without any help in my office. I have thirty-seven kids on diversion right now and ninety-seven truancies. I'm doing everything. Her and I are the only two in the office, and I can't do everything. So I would like to request a temporary, um, person in my office, which is my daughter, just for six to eight weeks. What, until I can get my assistant back. There is a statute that allows that in the personnel, it's thirty-two hundred. It's three months or less. And so I would like
With approval by the commissioners.
Yeah.
And that's why you're here?
Yes.
Okay.
I would move, I would move for approval of a temporary contract.
My only question is, is, would you have to train her, or does she have some experience, or?
Mostly data entry and answering the phone. I would have to train her very little. Yeah, I just need someone, when I'm in the meetings with kiddos, I'm not being interrupted and kind of take a little bit off my plate.
Okay, sounds good.
Hey, did you set a time limit on that in your motion? Three months? Cause we had similar problem with, uh, the assessor's office when I got on board.
And this is not a payroll position. This is a contract labor, ten ninety-nine.
And she did the same thing, and she had her daughter here for a limited amount of time, and that's when we came in front of you, cause she wanted to hire her, and we said, you can't hire her, you can have her temporarily. And Tammy's doing, following all the right steps.
And in your packets, I put the contract in there. I did set a time limit in, in there.
Just wanted to be sure we don't get sideways with someone later on, or make someone unhappy later on.
Right.
Correct. And the personnel policy says three months or less.
We still have a motion.
And that's what the motion is.
I'll second it.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Thank you.
Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
Motion's carried.
Thank you, Tammy.
All right, we're moving on down to, um, the next item, which is under old business. Time clock plus and payroll. Anything new, Lisa?
Yep, I have another, we, we've worked through the process a couple, three times. Run into a glitch, then they come back to me, I have another meeting tomorrow. Hopefully, there will be no more glitches and we can get, start testing.
Okay. All right, so I think that's it on that item unless there's comments. All right, if not, we'll keep going to public comments. So the Board of Commissioners will receive public comments on items discussed at this meeting or suggestions for items of discussion at a future board meeting. The board will not take action on comments presented this date. So we would ask, is there anyone, uh, tonight from the public that would like to make any other comments? Dave? It is Dave, right? Yeah, Mr. Wolf.
I'm Dave Wolf. Um, I'm the executive director of Legacy of the Plains Museum. Sorry if I go down. As per with the tourism-related comments today, I just want to invite you guys out to our meetings. Um, I was on the board for eight years. Um, I served actually as a capacity for events. Uh, then when I got the job with the museum, the attractions position moved, uh, moved open and, and I moved over there so we could get another events person in there. As, you know, uh, come see for yourself what we do. I think tourism is a great property tax relief, um, cause that's outside money that comes in, and see what we're actually accomplishing there, so. So that's all I would want to say. Just wanted to encourage you guys to come to our committee meetings, because I'm still a part of the committee in the sense of I'm on one of the committees, the subcommittees, uh, but Carl Leding Streaks attended most of our meetings. Uh, I think Tina plans on, uh, Tina Worthman plans on continuing that, uh, that great partnership, so. Yeah, so if you guys are, want to come see for yourself what we're doing, more than welcome for you guys to come out, so, thanks.
We appreciate the invitation. I should tell you that, um, technically, only two of our commissioners can be there at a time, cause otherwise, we're, um, having a official meeting.
You have an open meeting, because we're open meetings.
I think it's still a quorum would be my, I think Jason would probably confirm that, that if, if, um, these two guys are already saying that they'll be attending. And so if another one of us attended that tourism committee meeting, would that not be considered a quorum from this group and be too many people violating the open meetings law?
But they aren't making a decision.
Yeah. Well, that would be the, the issue, I guess, if, if it's just to attend a meeting for informational purposes only versus, you know, any circumstance where you have a quorum to.
I think more, more than anything else, it's appearance, for one thing.
Yeah, perception sometimes. But, but we just need to be careful of it. I guess if it's, uh, it is an open meeting, you guys advertise those meetings. If we, but we certainly can't get a three-way discussion going with commissioners, and we certainly can't have the committee recommending something and then three commissioners saying, oh yeah, we'll approve that at the next meeting. We can't do that.
This is just, just for you guys to come and see.
Okay. Well, and I appreciate the invitation, and certainly if there's ever a point where one of these guys can't be there, then that'd be a good, perfect opportunity for one of us to sit in, so, but I appreciate your comment.
We've always practiced, we've always went with the, with the side of, of not having all of us there for a quorum.
One of them might be from a legal point that maybe we could be there if we were real careful, but the perception sometimes is not, not good, so.
I don't know if we can handle all five of you guys.
Yeah, I know, we, we might, we might mess things up for you.
I'll, I'll comment on that, is that we've been talking since, since, since I stood at that podium and delivered the playbook. And the Legacy of the Plains was here, and the Gearing Tourism was here. We've been talking since that time that we needed to have a joint meeting. The commissioners and the tourism committee have had joint meetings in the past. And I really believe, um, that's the direction, that's one of the, one, one of the important things that needs to happen in the semi-near future. Because we need to go through the statutes together. in the semi-near future, because we need to go through the statutes together, we need to go through the bylaws together. You know, there's, there, there was a couple tourism committee members here today that said that they never understood the, the idea that this is an advisory committee, and, and that the commissioners are the spending authority, and that the committee is strictly advisory, and that needs, and, and there's some thing, you know, when I get into these discussions with people, they say, well, I'll, that's not how I read the statute. Well, we've had lawyers interpret the statutes, the statutes are written in very clear, plain, uh, sixth grade level English.
Not all statutes.
Well, this one is, this tourism statute is written at a newspaper level, no offense to the newspaper, but that's, there's a reason the newspaper's written that, I mean, it's not because of the writers, it's because of the readers. The, the, the point is, the, uh, we need to have a joint meeting, we need to get on the same page. We need to have a comprehensive understanding on both sides of the table, because the tourism, the tourism, the lodging tax exists because the commissioners say it does. And the commissioners can spend that money because that advisory board exists. So there's, there's not really any nuance to it, but we need to, we need everyone to be clear in, in, um, understanding of, of, of how this is designed and how it's supposed to work. And there is no, there really is no interpretation other than the, the very clear, uh, stated statutes.
Well, I think one of the things that Charlie has said here is that it does give us the legal then authority to be able to meet together with our group and your group, and I think that ultimately that it, that would not be a bad idea to let that happen sometime, so I appreciate that. It would go along with what you're saying.
Yep.
Okay? Alright, so we're still on, any other comments from the public? Alright, seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to the next item, which is comments from the board and staff reports with any discussion. Now, we'll start over here with Ms. Lisa, and then we'll go around this direction with any staff, if I forget someone, let me know. Sorry, Ms. Kelly, go ahead.
You should start with me, cause you always forget me.
Personnel board meetings Thursday night at six, four-thirty.
This Thursday?
This Thursday. And regional governance, I guess I wanted to make sure you guys are aware that our next meeting is Friday on February fourteenth, and we get to tour the middle school here in Gearing. Um, Gearing School is hosting, so.
Wasn't that the same date for chairman?
Yes.
Yeah.
Workshop, are you going?
So there's a good chance I am going.
Okay.
February fourteenth, so Charlie, you're the alternate for that.
Okay.
Where is it again?
It's over at the middle school.
Middle school.
And I don't know which door we enter, or anything yet, I believe school is not in session, that's why we are going.
Gearing, Gearing Middle School. You said Gearing Middle School?
You're gonna take a tour and talk about the upcoming bond, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, anything else, Lisa?
No, not today.
Okay, Jason, anything?
No, I will, um, just look at some of those other circumstances when the quorum issue can come into play, just so that we've, we've got that drilled down a little further.
Sure, okay, appreciate it. One of the things while we're on Jason's items, I asked him today that, um, obviously when we have a full group of five people up here, um, if we have a motion and the vote was three to two, three is a majority, and, um, a, a motion would generally pass with a three person voting affirmatively. I asked him about if we're down to four people, we would still need to have three people vote affirmatively, but if we're down to three people, which still gives us a quorum up here, then do we need all three people to vote affirmatively, or can two people?
Two, two.
And the answer's two, is what he told me, other than in a few unique circumstances where if the statute called that a certain percentage had to vote in favor.
There's some things that Lisa puts before you, I know for sure, that needs a percentage of the total member of, of the board.
The lid.
And the budget stuff, budgets, yeah, I think the lid, which is going away.
So when those things are in play and we know about it, staff will kinda keep us informed, alright.
And if there's only four of us, or four people, the vote's two.
We need three, right, then it's nothing, yeah.
So twenty-three dash two seventy-seven county supervisors quorum, that's the primary statute, and then it just talks about accepting cases otherwise provided for, where you have some other unique situation, like Kelly mentioned, where you might have to have a fix.
A percentage rather than a majority?
Right.
Okay.
We rarely have been at only three people, but certainly during, um, property tax protest time, sometimes we only have three people here, and it's important to note that two people voting affirmatively would, can, um, pass a, a motion. Alright, just wanted to touch base on that, Sheriff, looks like you're next.
I don't have anything.
Okay, and Troy? Okay, John? Selena? Nothing, okay, Kurt? Kurt's always got stuff.
Oh geez.
Just, uh, are playing again for that AARP grant, we, we cut the ask down to twenty thousand based on what their awards have been, which should still give us enough to cover, um, up to six shelters. If we have that money, since it's not from another federal, or it's not other tax money, it can be used as our local match to go for the other eighty percent, hopefully we get that done. And again, reminder, that transit development plan and my two-year operating agreement is in the process, Olson is helping me with both that AARP grant and this, any suggestions, ideas, thoughts you have for transit? Next two years, we kinda have to nail it down to a dollar figure, um, and then beyond that, just anything you might wanna look at in the future, you know, in the event of planning for a casino, or any of that type of thing, just ideas we have to put down and, and try and get, get, you know, it's like a five-year business plan, what we're gonna do in five years, and then it's every two years we modify it based on how things have changed, but.
Didn't North Platte get our casino?
No, the one from Hastings is moving to Ogallala.
Ogallala's broken ground, right?
And until this feasibility study comes, they can't approve any new ones, and there may not, depending on how that comes out, comes out at all, so. But anyway, just keep that in mind, and I appreciate any input if you have ideas or thoughts for the next five years going forward.
Quick question for you, sir, while you're standing. You have the fixed route, and then you have the, I forget what you call it.
Demand response?
The what?
Demand response, or.
Okay, how much of a notice you need on the demand response?
Um, day before.
The day before.
Yeah, we, we'd like no later than three, especially for early morning trip, because we start setting our start times for drivers, but yeah, day before.
Conversation with the individual who had a doctor's, or they, I don't know what it was, had to be somewhere, I, it was a medical thing, and the car didn't start.
And we, when that happens, we will try to accommodate, we have been so busy lately.
That's what I told them.
Hundred and seventy scheduled trips today, plus our route.
I told them that, that you do like to have some kind of, some kind of head on it.
And, and if it's, if it's, if we can do a deviation off the route, a lot of those we can add in last minute, depending on how many we already have, but.
Yeah, this individual's out of options.
Just a block or two off the route, and they're going to the hospital, we can add a deviation last minute fairly easily.
Could, could not find a ride, could not find a ride, car broke down.
So, but yeah, and always tell them, if it's something like that call, we will try to accommodate, we just can't guarantee it more than a day, without a day, days of advanced notice, so.
You volunteered me to come.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks, Heather? Okay, Steve?
I'll give you a quick River Bridge update, as you seen before Christmas, they had the structure pretty well tore out. Uh, over Christmas, they, they didn't come back till after New Year's for the Christmas break, with the holidays being in the middle of the week. Um, they do have Pier Four is now repaired, um, so now they are starting to put the stay-in-place forms down on the, uh, on the girders. So that'll take them about six weeks, they're, by the end of February, all the steel will be in place, and then hopefully come March, they'll be able to do a pour, so. Yeah, so.
That's moving along.
Yeah, they're cruising along pretty, pretty good on it, so far the weather's been pretty decent for them overall, so hopefully it kinda stays that way and then keep cruising along. So, um, they did bring up the question as far as when they do go to pour that, if it'd be alright to close the northbound lane, like at eight o'clock in the morning, and close it for the day to put the concrete trucks over, so they can pour that all in one day, they thought in the ten-hour day, they could pour that all. So what that means, can is smoothness. So, um, you know, I didn't probably think it would be a problem if they waited till eight, they thought they'd wait till eight, some morning traffic could get to work or whatever, they'd close it down while they pour and then open it back up. So that's where it's at at the moment, so.
We know you're doing your best, Steve.
So.
That's all.
It's always good when it's smooth, right?
They just wanna set a pumper truck on the other bridge.
Yes, yeah, it sounds like they wanna set a pumper truck on the bridge, and they'll just keep a line of concrete trucks there, and they say ten hours, they can have that all poured, so. So they gotta be moving along pretty good, I think, for that, but, that's what they're saying, so.
Alright, thanks. Gene, you're in the corner?
Yes, I've got nothing.
Okay. Um, Ms. Kelly?
What?
I remember this time.
Okay, so today I got permission from Secretary of State to have the school bond election by mail.
Yeah, I seen that that was gonna be all by mail.
It's gonna affect, let's say rounding seventy-five hundred, I've got seventy-five hundred registers, registered voters in that district. It includes Castle Rock, Gearing, Rubidoo, all four Gearing wards, Rural Mitchell, and Terry Town.
School district has to pay for that, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So I was waiting for that, so I can get my ballot order in, I've got a, um, people that, like, we've sent them a confirmation mailing to validate their voter registration, and they didn't respond, that, we were notified that they may have a possible address change, and sometimes it's as simple as they are snowbirds, and they picked up the change of address, but their real address is still here, and so I, I'm gonna send out a letter to those five hundred voters that we're having a special election, and they need to get that stuff updated.
Okay.
And then, I mean, get the word out for everybody that will vote, I mean, it's a lot of money for only thirty percent of people to make the decision.
My, my ten-year-old commented on that, if that vote goes through, he says our taxes are gonna go through. I said, really? You write the check for that, do you?
They're supposed to have some central drawings on the website.
I can't hear you, you're not at the microphone.
Okay.
You're gonna get in trouble.
Alright, what else, Ms. Kelly?
That's all I can, I wasn't prepared.
Oh, don't give me that. Alright, Charlie?
Okay, so, um, if you guys would like to attend via Zoom, I imagine you're not driving the Lincoln tomorrow, but if you would like to attend via Zoom, uh, the NACO Legislative Review Day, you can register on the NACO website, um, they have a list of bills that have, uh, been introduced so far that NACO is watching, and, um, will be taking positions on, uh, it's Thursday, Friday.
It's Thursday, okay. Legislative Bill Review.
I think the Zoom for people who aren't on the board is just Friday.
Well, this is, this one, anyone can, here on Thursday, anybody can register.
Thursday, and then Friday, I think, is you guys.
Friday is just the board, just the NACO board, okay. So it's, it's pretty interesting, it's pretty long, um, but they will fill you in on all three hundred-plus bills or two hundred-plus bills that, that will affect county government. If you haven't received the email of the bills that they have listed, I don't know if it went out to all county officials, or if it just went out to NACO board members, um, I can, I can send it to you. So if you're interested in that list, I can, I'll send it to you. Okay. So the, you know, all the elected officials, they have their affiliate groups that keep them apprised of these things, so I'm really here just informing the board on these, on these, on this item, and Lisa, and Kelly, and Heather, and Gene all. Yep, okay. And then I wanted to let everybody know, there's some items in your packet here, that I have been going around to various boards and organizations within the county to gather support for the sports tourism vision. The, and it, which is backed up by the Huddle Up Playbook, um, which tourism paid for. And so, so I've been presenting the book, I've been, I've been, you know, having one-on-one discussions, uh, so there are several letters of support that have come in so far. I anticipate there will be handfuls of additional letters of support, the communities behind this. And I understand that this is, you know, me going out and doing this is, is, I feel I'm, I am compelled to do this because of the mandate I have from my voters. My voters said, yeah, that sounds like a great idea, go get it done, and so I'm going to get it done. Now, the tourism committee can feel a different way, I'm acting in a, I'm acting as the commissioner of District Three. I'm not acting on this board, I'm not acting as tourism, I'm acting as the commissioner of District Three, who was elected by residents of Gearing, so, um, I'll continue to do that. And if you guys want to, um, tell me not to, if you want to encourage me to continue, I would listen. But, but that's what I'm doing, that's what I'll continue to do. The, uh, there was a couple comments about the meeting time and place change, um, for tourism, and I guess it, you know, what, didn't sit well with one of the, one of the members. We, this board acted as a board, took a vote, and gave the directive to any meeting that meets, any public meeting that occurs, um, as an official meeting of the county, whether it be Planning Commission, Commissioners, um, or Tourism. And I, I'm pretty sure that's all, the only three, Personnel Board doesn't count, uh, nine-one-one committee doesn't count um, as, as op, as, as, um, open meetings, so, the, um, but this board took action that all the, that all public meetings must take place in this room, be recorded on this device, and recorded on those cameras. And we also gave directive to make sure that those meetings, even, not just commissioner meetings, but also tourism meetings and Planning Commission meetings be available online. And I am certain that's not happening. So, um, we need to go back and look at the minutes, send a copy of those minutes to those departments who are in charge of holding those meetings.
Tell them where to find it on our website.
And they need tra, I mean, they're, they need trained.
And we, this would have been nice to talk about when John was still here.
Yeah, so, you know, there's, you know, we can take action as a board, but if we, if we don't take the necessary steps to train the staff to do that, I don't know if it, um.
I thought the Tourism Committee, that she was recording those, so she could, she could get a hold of those.
Yeah, she's recording, she's recording, yeah, but they're supposed to be on the website. So, um, that's just the next step, so we can, we can work towards that. But that, that's why we moved into this room, um, because this board acted. And then, uh. Um, and then, uh, that's all, I guess that's all I had.
Okay, Ken?
Uh, I don't have much, we had, uh, two of the meetings, the, the Thursday meetings, one was canceled because of, I'm not sure why it was canceled, they, they couldn't get a quorum, that's what it was. Nothing big coming out of any of the meetings, it was all just normal, normal business, the only thing that we had quite a discussion on was the the voting issue again, the abstaining from voting. And, and why, why it was, I, I don't have an idea, Pam Born had given the, the suggestion and I absolutely agree, is that if there's not a quorum, you don't hold the meeting, cancel the meeting, cause you can't conduct any business anyway. That didn't go over well with, with, with one of the boards, they were, they were going to do it anyway. Well, then, go ahead, uh, but anyway, that's, that probably took up most of the meeting, was this, this voting, this abstaining from voting because I wasn't at the meeting. But, we had two attorneys' opinions on it and I still, I still stick to that, but uh, other than that, there wasn't anything really big coming out of any of the meetings that would affect accounting.
Okay. Um, the, just wanna remind everyone of a couple things, our next regular meeting is February third. And Kelly, you correct me if I'm wrong, February fourteenth, you mentioned regional governance and, um, that'll be coming.
She mentioned, yeah, regional governance and then Chair Workshop.
Chairman in Kearney.
In Kearney.
And I, I do plan to go to that, so Charlie hopefully can go to regional governance. Um, February eighteenth, which is a Tuesday, would be our next regular meeting, the way I see it, because of a holiday.
I agree.
Um, a couple meetings I have, I have a Panhandle Public Health District meeting, um, and this is our, um, beginning of the year strategy session, it's a seven or eight-hour meeting in Bridgeport. I think that's next thir- or this Thursday, um, that I'll be going to. Uh, Personnel Policy Board is this Thursday and, um, the, uh, that I'll be going to. I think those are my two major ones, um, that's all I have, Mike?
Uh, last week I went to a UNO, uh, symposium for medical response at, uh, Civic Center and we had panel mental health there, regional emergency services, emergency management, CERT. And, uh, we discussed, uh, granting us the, a variety of topics that we needed to cover in an emergency with medical support. Uh, Bridgeport Hospital was also there. Uh, I have a meeting coming up with CERT and Selinda, I think it's this month, where to discuss our communications needs and, and protocols and, and, uh, I have a RE21 behavioral health peer support training next week, it's three days, it's for, uh, first responder community to, uh, implement CISM, CSD and also, uh, train the average officer, fireman to recognize when a teammate needs, uh, some peer support. And the idea behind this is to keep them in the battle. Uh, keep our fellow workers spiritually and mentally healthy because in that field, there's a lot of overload, so I'll be working with that. Uh, we met, uh, with Region Twenty-Two Board at Mitchell City Hall here about a week or so ago. Uh, and that's part of our taking the meetings on the road to our different communities in the county. I've been working with the, uh, Community Cleanup Crew, representing Scottslope County. Uh, we're about halfway there, a lot, a lot of things going on. And that's about it.
The meeting that you're going to have with Communications, you're there representing CERT, is that correct?
Yes, it's, it's, it's just strictly a CERT and Com Center meeting. I'm the assistant coordinator for CERT and then we'll have the coordinator as well as our communications guy.
Okay. Russ?
Okay, um, last Tuesday, or Tuesday before, I guess, was my first, uh, cap wind meeting, Ken?
The deal was good, I'm sorry.
Uh, chilly.
Can you use your microphone, Russ?
But anyway, uh,
Russ?
First, first hour.
Thank you.
It was orientation and counseling, so I've been counseling a little. Um, then Wednesday was our regular airport board meeting and there's not a lot going on, like I say, there's just pretty much just getting started for the year, they're looking at maybe doing some work eventually. Fri- or Thurs- this Thursday will be my Cyrus House meeting, that's usually done over the phone, you know. So, that's about all I've got.
Okay. Anything else from anyone? Um, I guess we have legislation, but I think Charlie, you've covered that.
Yep.
Alright, no other items on the agenda, meeting's adjourned. Yeah.